So it tells you this is the element that we took in since the last board meeting.
This is cumulative from the first of the year.
For all four years.
From the last board meeting, from the last vouchers that you guys have sent over.
Interesting. That's in the.
Which one? The bottom one?
Yes, the five million.
I'm listening in.
The five million at the very bottom, what we've taken in since basically the first of the year.
No, no, there was a newer one. That was a four-year.
Right.
Yeah, because.
So Kelly, Kelly runs these before.
All right.
And then she shows you what you signed, your vouchers you signed.
Yeah, I wanted to.
It tells you exactly who we sent a check to.
But we want to get that for you.
Um, what it was for.
I wanted to know, am I ever going to get in trouble for signing these vouchers?
Me too.
Because this is what this is.
Right.
Yeah, it shows you.
It's a definition.
And it tells you the check number he sent down and everything.
Pardon?
So that's what all of it is.
Trail.
We input it all.
That's a lot of.
Yep.
So does this, does this last number stay?
Well.
Only reason.
It shows you what year, what date she signed it.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, okay.
Same pay for 25 seconds. So whenever Kelly runs that.
Eighteen days.
From the Friday before, you know.
I think it just.
That's the only reason I know what it was. Because I'm in the first year of that new year.
So it shows that it wasn't.
I wanted to call you and ask you if you had a question.
So we're getting property taxes in already.
What's that?
We're getting property taxes in already.
Well, of course we do. We've started December 1st when bills went out.
So why would anybody pay early or did they get it on their taxes?
Because they have money. They don't know what to do with it.
Do with it. I can't.
So they have a list.
Now so many people pay their taxes December 1st when the bill goes.
To get it on the tax, their tax.
I had to change that policy in my office because a long time ago when we wrote the policies, if land sales were closed, the office was closed.
Pay it in whatever year you pay it in. And I figure if you take it, if you take it in this year, then I don't have it for next year. So what's the difference?
Much more often. It was like, well, wait. We need you to be here.
I'm terrible. I was gonna, I was gonna write my checks. She told me, you know, you can pay.
Pay them early.
I said, okay, the only time I ever use my checkbook is to pay taxes. Literally, that's the only.
That's about my.
Yes, I'll be above.
Or workers.
Find that checkbook and then it was gone.
If a worker comes to the house or something like.
Tried to talk to numerous times about becoming a manager.
I haven't used my checkbook since last year.
You can pay with a card or a check.
Yeah, and they charge you like thirty dollars.
It does. It seems very well. Processing for a week.
Yeah. The only thing my bank is having a lot of somebody screwing up. I don't know whether it's your consumer or I have three.
Do they have a peddler's permit?
Established comp, like the barn.
I'd rather just live with theirs.
And I'll get a zero balance on one and five hundred dollars on the other one and then minus balance on the other one. I said, okay, go straight out. And then last week or two, I got six hundred dollars on one. Like, how do I tell my barn people this really isn't me? It's your rent.
And my three thousand.
I got a tall years old. I can't even figure out what they're doing. Well, I think you're reading them, reading the meters from the road and that stuff. That's when this starts.
Well, they probably, they probably is probably old.
They guesstimate. Well.
Did they put new meters on? Did they buy no minor?
It's like, I will not miss that. Minor new ones and they can drive down the road and they read it from a reader. But if they're too lazy to drive down the road, then they guesstimate.
Ready when you are.
I was born ready. Microphone.
Did you? Good evening. We're gonna get started.
Go ahead.
Uh, welcome to the Bath Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, January 21st. We're meeting today, uh, the day after we normally would due to the MLK Day holiday. I hope your MLK Day was, uh, well and you were reflective on the purpose. Uh, if I could ask my colleagues to make sure your microphones are on so folks can hear us in the audience and at home. Uh, we'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Challander, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Kotke?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
Gang's all here. We will, uh, move next to civic reflection. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, follow with a moment of silence. So if you could stand if you're able to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. We've come to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda. For folks in the audience, if you'd like a copy of the agenda, there's one on the lectern for you to follow along. I know we have at least one change. We mistakenly put, uh, item thirteen AA, Park Lake Nature Trail, uh, under unfinished, no, excuse me, under introduction discussion, but we wanted it under, under action. Is that correct, Ray? That's what you wanted?
Just move it from the little A to the big B. Is that correct?
No. Uh, yeah, what, uh, the clerk and I have, uh, already written down in our paper, so would propose, is to move it from thirteen AA to thirteen BD.
Well, that's a long time ago, see? So I'm having trouble remembering what I asked for.
So it would be item four under items for action under unfinished business. Are there other changes folks are seeking or is there pushback to that change?
Excuse me, you said item four. Shouldn't it be D, small d?
Yes, but it is still the fourth item.
Okay.
For those that think numerically, I was trying to.
I see that.
Use letters and numbers. Next, I will use colors and sounds. All right. I don't hear any other changes. Would someone like to put forward a motion to change the agenda or to approve the agenda with the changes we've just discussed?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the changes that we have presented, which is moving thirteen AA to thirteen BD. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We've got an agenda. Item four on the agenda is conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll keep moving. Item five is public statement one. For those in the audience who would like to make a public statement, you have up to three minutes designated for statements concerning tonight's agenda, only tonight's agenda items. If you have something else to say or something in addition to say, there will be an additional three minutes at the end of the night that you can tell us anything that your little heart desires about any topic. I see we have our first public.
Good evening. Judy Gerty runs up Park Lake and resides on Park Lake Road. I'm glad to see you took that action to move this, uh, nature trail into, uh, item for action. We have the opportunity to apply for about four hundred thousand dollars of DNR money. We've got everything in place. We've got our five-year rec claim approved by the DNR. Um, the opportunity is there to apply for the trust fund money that we can put towards the, um, towards the trail. And now is the time to do it because I believe those applications are due in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garty. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak tonight?
Ms. Ritchie, Outer Drive. And, uh, I too am glad to see that it's moved to the items for action. I do, uh, that you all will take action this evening. And, uh, for the positive, I, I hope you all read Danny Hayes's, uh, report and, uh, and his, his, uh, portion that was in the packet. I think that they did a great job in, in writing that up, that front, uh, Park Lake Advisory Board. And, uh, so yeah, I hope you will take action in the positive this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to talk about something on the agenda tonight? Does anyone else want to talk during public comment tonight? Just want to make sure our new friend does not want to speak to the public. Got it. Uh, so we will move on to item number six, items for county, state, federal, and other agencies. I don't see anybody here.
I'm not expecting anyone.
Great. Not great. Okay. We would welcome them to be here. Item seven is a consent agenda. Looks like we've got several, uh, sets of minutes to approve from Planning Commission, Rec Advisory Committee, Senior Services Advisory Board from several months. Would someone like to move those forward as part of the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept them as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Because it's in the consent agenda, we do not have discussion. So we'll move right to vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. That brings us to item number eight, approval of the minutes. We have the Board of Trustees meeting from January 6th, uh, a single set of minutes to approve. How would you all like to handle that?
I'll make. Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from Board of Trustees meeting, January 6th, as submitted.
Now, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting from January 6th. Is there any discussion, questions, changes? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes from January 6th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number nine. We've got two sets of vouchers. Remember, we've got some of fiscal year 2024's vouchers sort of leaking into 2025, which we'll have for the next couple of weeks here. So we will need to approve each of those and we should approve them separately.
We can do them together.
Well, we can do them together, whatever your pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve both sets of vouchers, twenty-four and twenty-five. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to item 10. It is time for our quarterly report from the treasurer. Take it away.
Okay, as you can see in the packet, there is your Excel spreadsheet that was given to you. It goes month by month with the ending balance in each account that we have. I would just like to state last year, well, I haven't done December, but, um, in the sewer, in our budget, we only put that we would earn twenty-five thousand dollars in interest. As of now, we are over seventy.
Wow.
Um, and in the general fund, we budgeted only fifty-eight thousand. Currently, we are at, um, two hundred and twenty-eight.
Wait, what?
You've been playing this.
Oh, sorry, a hundred and seventy. Wrong dollar amount.
It's still a lot though.
It is. It's a lot over what we budgeted for. So, um, we'll have to see how the interest rates do for 2025. Um, you can see on the report, some of our CDs come due in, um, May and Ju- May and July, most of them. Uh, so we'll have to see what the rates are doing then to see how good we can get.
These are twelve-month CDs?
Depends.
I see that.
They have the terms. Some of them are, most of them are.
Oh, very.
Some of them are four months. Some of them are a hundred and eighty days. It just depends on what the best rate was at the time.
Sure.
So you guys have any questions?
Whoever's playing the numbers doing well.
Thanks.
Basically, with my rudimentary math here, that's like a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars more than we budgeted.
Correct.
That's, um.
Amazing.
That's tremendous. Yeah, that's really tremendous. Geez. Well done. Thank you. Questions, uh, for the treasurer's report? All right.
Statement.
Good job, Jen.
Thanks for being just the, uh, appointed one until November. I did great.
Well, glad we, uh, appointed you. All right, that brings us, and we'll, we'll have another treasurer's report then in, um, March or is it April?
Usually that, um, April.
April, okay. That will cover the first quarter.
Yep.
Great. Looking forward to that. Only if it's this good, though.
Sorry if it's not, but it's not me.
Um, that brings us to item eleven. I am presenting to you three committee reappointments. Mark Simzak for the Recreation Advisory Committee, Ben Barker for the Senior Services Advisory Board, and Jean Jones for the Senior Services Advisory Board. I touched base with each of those folks and they indicated they are interested in serving again and they submitted a reappointment form. Uh, again, that's our new form that's easier and more efficient for folks to fill out for reappointment versus appointment for the first time.
We don't have that online yet, do we?
I believe we do.
Do we?
I believe so. I think the reappointment one.
I remember hearing that it was going to be, but I.
I think so. If you find out it's not, let Taylor know.
Well, I haven't applied in a while for committees.
Well, now you don't have to.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
If you are so inclined, we could take each of these separately. We could take them together, right?
Let's do the Recreation Advisory as one and the Senior Center.
Take them together by a committee?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mark Simzak to the Recreation Advisory Committee, term ending December 31st, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mark Simzak to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Is there, are there any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the reappointment of Mr. Simzak, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Welcome back to the Recreation Advisory Committee. That brings us to item B and C, Ben Barker and Jean Jones to the Senior Services Advisory Board.
I make the motion to approve the reappointment of Ben Barker and Jean Jones to the Senior Services Advisory Board.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second.
We should put the time of their expiration down there.
Term ending.
Term ending December 31st, 2027. Is that the inference that we made in your motion?
Yes.
Great.
I'm sorry, I should have read that whole line.
Uh, so a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we'll take another voice vote. All those in favor to, excuse me, all those in favor of the reappointment of Mr. Barker and Ms. Jones to the Senior Services Advisory Board with the term ending December 31st, 2027, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back to the Senior Services Advisory Board to both of them. Thank you for your service to all three of them. If you are interested in serving on a committee and are not currently serving on a committee, that application is also on the board or on the website and, uh, you can follow along in the Friday, what do we call that? Friday note? Friday report? Uh, to see what vacancies we have, and we have several. So we'd love to have more citizen involvement. Uh, that brings us to item 12, Township Committee Reports. While we figure out what we do with this section, uh, we agreed that Kate had asked to, to give us a update on what's happening at the Planning Commission. Uh, so excited for her to do so.
All right, thank you. I know I, I had mentioned a few times that I thought it would be helpful to have committee reports share out just so we all know what's happening. So I figured I would step up and do that first. From our Planning Commission meeting last week, I just wanted to mention a couple of highlights. First off, the Board of Trustees had asked the Planning Commission to, um, take up the senior center parking lot study request. And we spent, I don't know, probably an hour at least having a discussion about parking and what the factors are that, that are contributing to the parking lot congestion and some solutions to remedy those, as well as the parking lot, um, study that was requested. So we essentially put together kind of a long punch list of information for Miles and the staff to gather together so that we can circle back to it next time and use it to make an informed decision on a recommendation from the Planning Committee moving forward. So that has happened very quickly, I think. And then, um, the second thing that I wanted to highlight is that in the report from the planner, Miles and our planning intern Allison shared a really nice presentation that they put together that highlighted some statistics about the work that the Planning Department did in 2024. And I thought it was, um, really impressive and kind of shows that there are a lot of things happening behind the scenes here at Bath Township that a lot of our residents just don't know about on a daily basis. Yeah, we see a building going up here, a business opening there. But in order to make that happen, the Planning Department has to do a lot of work behind the scenes from issuing permits to looking at plans, speaking with developers, um, bringing them to the Planning Commission, often multiple times. And, um, I think I, I wanted to really make sure that that gets recognized a, a little bit and that the board is aware of all that hard work that's going on. I think, um, he mentioned a hundred and thirty-eight building permits were issued last year, which was an increase over the year and the year before that, which is impressive. You got the same amount of people doing more work on all of those permits. So I wanted to highlight that. They shared a really nice slideshow. I think it would be a good idea for the township to think about including some of the graphics, maybe on our Facebook page, so that the, the general public has, um, just some sense of all the stuff that, that goes on here. I say behind the scenes, not that it's in secret, but it's just all the work that happens that doesn't get a lot of publicity. And I think, I think that's the gist, the highlights anyway.
Thank you for that. Any questions?
Good report.
For? I do miss not being on the Planning Commission because you know what's going on.
Same. That's exactly what I was gonna say.
You can watch the videos.
I watch them every week.
I actually do watch the videos. Yes, it's not the same though. It's not the same as learning in, in the room. But thank you for repping us there and thank you for reporting out.
And I look forward to hearing from other committees doing the same.
Sounds good. Thank you for stepping up. That brings us to item thirteen, unfinished business. Uh, we moved the item for introduction and discussion, so there's nothing in that section now. So that'll take us right to thirteen large B, items for action, small a, introduction and first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number three-one dot eight-nine, which is the fee schedule. We heard about this at our last meeting. Miles is here for answering questions, providing context if we should need it. I don't know that we need the whole, uh, another presentation on the same topic unless anybody wants to revisit it. Miles, is there anything you didn't have last week that you want to make sure, or last meeting that you want to make sure we have now?
It does look like administration decoupled the two items, the fee schedule ordinance and the fee schedule itself. I see just the ordinance is included, but so I'm assuming we get through this and we'll bring back the fee schedule itself. So just heads up on that, add the suggestion of legal last time.
Sort of doing it in a linear way?
Yep.
All right. Are there questions for Miles? Are there comments about the ordinance? Are there motions to be made?
I'll make a motion to approve the introduction of first reading ordinance number thirty-one eighty-nine fee schedule.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? I'll just say this seems really reasonable to me. Seems like we're in power, on par with what we were trying to do to modernize some of our fees and, and things. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the item, excuse me, introduction and first reading of ordinance amendment number four-five dot oh-one, land division. Again, we have the planner here to answer questions. Should we have them? Is there anything new to report since last you spoke to us on this issue?
Again, minor, legal suggests the two minor, minor fixes, their grammar and reference were way to build a fix now and the copy provided the administration.
Great. Are there questions for the planner, discussion to be had, motions to be made? Silence to break.
Break. I'll make the motion to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance amendment forty-five dot zero-one, land division.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for the introduction and first reading of ordinance amendment number forty-five dot oh-one concerning land division. Is there, are there discussion items, questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Motion carries. That brings us to item C, MEDC Revitalization and Placemaking Program, Subgrant 2.0. Uh, Planner Roble, do you want to come to the lectern and speak on this one?
There's probably enough new information here to war. Um, all right, so just for context, if everyone remembers, a while back, uh, the Planning Department went after a grant from the MEDC for a placemaking, their, their placemaking 2.0 grant. I think that was like in late twenty-three. We ended up not getting awarded that grant. The state prioritized housing, which is understandable given the circumstances. In an effort to make the region more competitive this time, LEAP is trying to take a bunch of projects that they felt had really stood out last time and including ours, they reached out to myself and that Paki. We had a meeting with them. They'd like to take our project, which they felt was competitive, and roll it with a bunch of others and then apply it as a region and then we would accept a subgrant from LEAP. So again, it's through the same MEDC funds as before. The grant structure is largely the same. Um, I think with the municipality, the size, we're limited to an ask of a hundred and fifty thousand, for placemaking efforts, we were seeking to couple that with the Webster Road Corridor Improvement Projects. That way we can use money that we've already spent as a municipality on that project to price, to do the match, the fifty percent match required for this reform. So tight timeline on it. Um, me and Beth worked up a lot last week and we're hoping to be able to reply.
Can you tell us in the audience exactly what that grant money will be used for?
Yeah, uh, great question. So, um, it's for placemaking efforts along the Webster Road Corridor. So anyone that's not aware, Webster Road, a lot of stuff's going on with the next, um, couple of months here coming, as soon as the weather probably breaks in the spring. The road itself is going to be again, a really heavy resurfacing. There's going to be a lot of non-motorized elements or sidewalks continuing up even to the, um, school kind of village bath area. With some of those sidewalks, one of our safety concerns has been lighting, particularly pedestrian scale lighting. So we've used this money to get additional pedestrian scale lighting and then remove some of the legacy lighting that exists on the road to try to create, in the planning world, it's called sense of place. So you feel like when you're on the road and you know you're kind of entering a town, there's all these little elements that make you feel like you're entering a town. We don't have any of those elements, right? So we'd like to establish some of those.
We have a sign.
We have a sign. It is true, there is a sign. We'd like to improve the sign, which is a good segue into what else we want to spend the money on, which is a new welcome to Bath sign. So, um, lighting, welcome to Bath sign. We're looking at maybe a couple of benches and we'll really just see how far we can make that a hundred thousand go. But those are the main elements. Non-motorized place-based elements.
A hundred or a hundred fifty?
A hundred fifteen.
Okay, just want to make sure I wrote it down right.
Yeah, that's to back me up on this. LEAP has, they've changed that dollar amount on what it could be. So we had to change as the week went, but we were landing on a hundred and fifty.
That's because LEAP owes us. This is great. It's nice to be able to repurpose something that you've already done.
Yeah.
Uh, and hopefully be more successful.
Yeah, for sure. It definitely made this grant process a lot easier because we already went through something similar before. So it was a lot of just, you know, rip and replace.
Thank you, Miles.
Yeah, sure.
Other questions? Any concerns? As part of our grant-seeking policy at the township, these things need to come before the board before we apply. That's why you see the grant application in front of you. It's a standard form that we use. So that's what we're being asked to approve today is the approval to apply for the grant. If you are so interested tonight, it would take a motion.
Are you kidding? Kate's got her mouth open.
I was just looking for the proper text, so I didn't bungle it up, but it might be too late for that.
I'll make the motion for, um, the planner to apply for the grant for the MEDC Revitalization and Placement Program, Subgrant 2.0.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there, are there any more questions, any concerns? Any contrary thoughts? All right, this is a roll call?
Yep.
Great.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you to the planner and the team and to the board. All right. That brings us to new item D, Park Lake Trail. Ray, you are the one who asked for this to be on the agenda. We, you and I have not spoken about how you want this structured. I probably should ask you that, but I'm asking you now, how do you want this structured?
Well, I see Ben's name on there, so he may have very well forgotten some stuff together. So Ben, if you have some things to say that I think...
I'm more so here for answering any questions from you guys. I kind of went over a lot of things last man when we had that big meeting. I did an extensive, I did do an extensive amount of research in a short amount of time trying to understand this project. So I do have some, you know, knowledge on the properties and the conception of this trail. If you guys have any questions, I stand by my recommendation from last year that I feel we should focus our efforts on the most side of the lake. So I, but I will gladly answer questions for you guys.
So to put that in other words, the staff is not recommending we move forward with this proposal?
Correct. And reason for that is I feel like this project got off the, on the wrong foot. It didn't really go through a proper project management process as far as, like, the project initiation. We identified the scope, we identified what we wanted this project to do, but did we do a needs assessment? Did we determine what the, what this will accomplish, who will serve? And then the next step to that is feasibility study. Did we do a feasibility study? And no, I think we're all over the place on this. And this kind of falls into the next part, actually, next agenda item, is strategic planning. I think that it really needs to go through a strategic planning phase to determine all these things.
Thank you. Does the administration support that recommendation?
We do. Thank you.
May I speak? Could, could I ask a question?
Yes.
First? What, the proposal in here outlines a smaller project than we've been dreaming of since, you know, I think 2013.
We like to refer to it as phase one.
Phase one, okay. And if I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is the amount 5,500?
For?
The proposal.
I don't understand what you're asking.
How much money is the proposal asking us to spend?
The proposal?
Yes.
Are you talking about the...
The proposal in our packet. The number I found was 5,500, but I don't know if I, was reading that correctly?
I, I believe the, the amount of 5,500 came out in Judy Gardi's CIP.
No, I think it was from here someplace.
Page 36 of the packet, the budget says 5,500.
It was Dan. So that would have been the...
Just for the...
What do you call that thing?
Park Lake Advisory Board?
No. The, the plan that he came out with, we had a name for it.
Oh, for the woodchip. That's what's...
It wasn't a, yeah, okay. So if you remember 5,500, I don't remember 5,500.
I mean, I don't remember it. I'm looking at it.
The same? Yeah, exactly.
I just want to make sure that, that's the number, but it seems like maybe that's not the number.
Well, to me, it's always been the 50,000 that the approved CIP was for, if you're looking at numbers, you know, monetary numbers to come out with.
Okay.
That, the report in advisory statement that Dan and the, and the Park Lake Advisory Board came out with is that. It's just a, you know, it's a recommendation. It wasn't a, an official ask. It was not official CIP, anything of that sort. And it's inordinately lower than what I think needs to be approved.
We don't have the CIP in front of us. Is that something someone could make a quick copy of? I just want to make sure folks have in front of them what we're asking them to perhaps vote on.
That would have been 2022, written in 2021, I believe, passed and approved in 2022 for the amount of $50,000. And then it had since been taken off the budget because of a quandary of things and also what we're talking about right now. We took kind of like three steps backwards after that CIP was approved.
I have this. I could go make copies. It may take 10 minutes.
Does it have the 2022 Park Lake Trail in it?
No, I believe it is. It says 2025, but we need to go look really quickly.
Yeah, I think he's saying that's not in...
The new CIP?
There. I really don't have the CIP in here. I don't.
Do you want me to elucidate on this, or? I guess I'm wondering why we need a copy of that CIP in front of us right now.
If we're going to vote on $50,000 tonight, I think the board should see what we're voting on. That's my opinion. The rest of you can disagree with that. What was in our packet was the 5,500. That's why I'm clarifying what we're asking the board to approve tonight.
Okay.
If you can speak to it, though, if you can speak for 10 minutes on it, during that 10 minutes, we can get copies made.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's the wrong one, though. We need the CIP from 2022.
The actual CIP.
Or the proposal from 2022, right? It doesn't have to be the whole capital improvement plan.
Yeah, that's true.
But it's not in our current one, so we don't even look at the older ones, do we?
I mean, that's not how we usually do business, but I think that's what he's asking us to consider tonight. Is the CIP that was put in in 2022.
Yes.
Because it was not included in the 25 one?
Right.
Okay.
The reason I brought this up and I wanted it for an item for action is because I sound like a broken record sometimes, but the fact of the matter is, is that we have an official sanctioned CIP process. That process was followed to the T with that CIP. It was approved and graded top priority by our planning commission. It was then passed to this board, the previous board, and other bodies up here, for approval, and it was approved. And then it just kind of got washed into the drain because some rightful reasons, but that's a fact. And, you know, if anybody wants to dispute that, you can. And what, what Ben just said about feasibility and needs and meetings, that to a T was all done, documented, and completed as far back as 2017. And we, we had the public meetings, you know, assess the needs for the community. The community stepped forth. The strategic plan, if you will. I can never remember if it's the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, or the master plan, but it was put in there as a top priority. And, and it was agreed upon by the community that, yes, indeed, they wanted it, and it was a top priority. One of the things that... Oh, she's back. Maybe I should stop.
No, somebody else is.
One of the things that I, I find a combination perplexing and somewhat amusing to me is that the statement was because there's a lot of water back there. It couldn't be a park. And I'm thinking, hmm. Green space and groundwater and drinking water is required to go through that kind of natural process to trickle down into our water table and our, our waterway, or, excuse me, our, I don't want to say swamp. It is, it is, in a, in a general term. Our wetlands, is that, oh, Miles isn't here. Anyway, maybe we want to have Dan up here and talk, too. He's over there itching, itching to just talk, so. He has a lot of the positive, go ahead.
Wasn't some of that money spent for surveys?
It was put back, as I recall.
Of that 5,000?
It was, it was, some of the money was expended to accept the property down at the end of Webster Road from the Drain Commission. So it was, some of it was...
Did we pay the surveys out of?
I believe that happened out of there as well. But I think the following year, it came back up to the 50,000. I was also, also going to offer just a clarification. This board does not adopt the CIP. It accepts the CIP. So in a sense, it's a recommendation. It, it, it does, it does that so, like with the audit and other, sorry, projects that are, projects and plans that are created outside of this body, it will accept it. They don't necessarily approve it.
So are you saying that after the planning commission grades the CIPs, utilizing our designated CIP process, it is then passed on to this board, I thought?
I, I was going to go back to the minutes.
For approval.
It's an acceptance of the plan, and that's why unless there's a recommendation to spend from that plan, it generally, it does not happen. I would have to recommend, or the board has to take up a project before it is, becomes an approved project.
Okay, so after the CIP is acknowledged by this board? Which it has been. What's the next process to...
Either I recommend, or the board decides to take up a project and put it in the budget.
Okay. Well, I guess that's what I'm asking.
It's currently not in our budget, and we are currently budgeting.
It has currently been withdrawn from a budget that it's been in for the last three years.
Yep.
That is true, but also, to be clear, the budget doesn't roll over every year. The budget is a new each year.
That's correct.
So what you're saying is functionally true, but in terms of how the budget works, it doesn't really matter that it was in the budget for a while. You know what I mean? Sure. Dan, if you'd like to address the, the board, that would be great.
Yeah. So I think what you have in your packet, I didn't look at it, is Dan Hayes, I'm chair of the Park Lake Advisory Board, or as John Parklake. I think what you'd have is what we call the prospectus.
Prospectus. That was the word.
Park Lake Advisory Board, friends of Park Lake, the developer who submitted...
I need to remind you of that.
Well, it says, it says...
Ben, she had made it in 2024. The, the direction given to our board was to look at A, a lower cost option, and B, also to acknowledge that the newly formed Eagle's Nest was a potential impediment to the original plans. So from that, we had a kind of a plan that we proposed as, for parking to contact Oak Island to see if they'd be willing partners. I'll remind you, Ed, one of the things we discussed was for debris to pursue that.
Yeah, we've got the name.
So that is an action item that, that will remind you that you all have not done. And I was invited to that meeting.
Yeah. To be fair, we just got the right name today.
Yeah. So, so again, I think process-wise, that's part of it. Yeah, that's the same type of... So, you know, the, the lower cost, we started this process, you know, and one of the feasibility items is parking, of course. That's where we as a board can all recommend items and go through those negotiations. So if the park were available there, our, our proposal was to basically put woodchips down along the burn that exists and kind of the existing trail. The cost was an estimate that came from Judy contacting some landscaping contractors and that'd be the 5,500. So that was kind of our direction. We were, as an advisory board, we were never directed to do a feasibility study. However, we did have two public meetings to gather public input. The proposal in front of you articulates, as kind of Ray has said, this does meet with the number one party of the Bath Township Parks and Rec five-year plan. We also provide a clear purpose for the project in relationship to township plans and all of it. So, you know, we were not directed to do anything differently. I don't, you know, get a feasibility study, all the needs studies.
Yeah, that would be things that our staff or a hired consultant would do. Okay, that's helpful context. Thank you.
So again, whether you go forward or not, I, again, personally, I think it's important to follow through on the commitment the board had to determine the feasibility of parking at Oak Island. Our boards view a hinge on this.
I don't want to put you on the spot, so feel free to push, push back on this. If we were to find ourselves taking action tonight, what would your recommendation be? The 5,500 prospectus or the $50,000 CIP or some other thing?
So, so I'll, I'll, two parts. The Park Lake Advisory Board has approved what is in front of you for 5,500.
Okay.
So we are in full favor of that. We would like to see this move forward. We have, this has been a board on this a long time. There's been, there's been periods, not that this necessary, or lack of communication that have been very frustrating, lack of action that has been very frustrating. And then there are, like, the Eagle Nest is throwing a new element to this. So that's the board. Personally, I would like to see us go forward with this. I think it's low enough cost. Heard something about place, you know, having, having this place around the lake, the lake is heavily used. This would formalize some of the utilization of that, that trail, which is already in form. And again, as Professor Fisher's a my life, and it does give access to kind of some unique habitats, again, that's a particular area that would be valuable for various purposes and personal recreation.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. This is... There should, there should be a form that should be filled out. You know what I mean?
Like the application?
Yeah.
Yeah, like the actual form.
This is actually approved in the, the, set forth in the CIP, so.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that this tells us everything.
No, I thought they were doing the ledger.
Like the, what do we call, app, applicant, what do we call that?
Their application?
Application? Okay. I think that will be helpful. Okay.
Oh, it's under discretionary projects if we wanted to take it up.
Yeah. I, while folks were talking, I was just looking in the reports that I have in front of me. I have our Parks and Rec plan that was approved 2024 to 2028. Table 7.1 on page 45 is the Bath Charter Township Action Program. That's sort of what we've agreed to move toward and forward. When I look at Park Lake Preserve, there are two pieces. One is outline phases for development of preserve, which I think is, the trail is part of that concept, right?
It is. And one of the, excuse me, one of the reasons that nature preserve was added was because I think it's our responsibility to preserve our green space as much as we can for future generations. And this is an ideal opportunity because we already own all that land, and there's a lot of water back there, and there's a lot of trees back there. And all we have to do is wave our wand and, and it's preserved so that our children and our schools and everyone else can take advantage of this officially instead of clandestinely like they have been over the past 50, 60, 70 years.
So preserve, the preserve is like a, a sort of macro term that the park fits within. Is that fair to say?
And that the trail goes through, yes.
Yes, and the trail, that's sort of a layer, yes.
There are various ways to do that. You can do a conservation easement. You can do all kinds of other stuff. I don't think that's necessary because the township already owns all the land, and we can just make a, an edict that we guarantee we won't ever build on or anything, you know.
Okay. So in this section of Park Lake Preserve outlining the phases was priority one. And the second item is develop the preserve according to phases of the conceptual plan. That's priority two, which makes sense. Those are sequential, and they relate to three of the goals, three of the six goals within the plan. So there is some acceptance here by the township that we want to move something forward. What has been sort of put official into writing is outlining phases and then developing the phases, developing the preserve based on those phases. That's the rec plan.
And if you look at the rec plan previous to that, it's almost verbatim of that exact term.
Okay.
A top priority.
I couldn't find it in the non-motorized plan. Do you know if it's in here?
It is.
That was a cursory review that I did, so.
And that was one of the reasons. I, I guess what I want to clarify also is everybody says $50,000. Holy cow. One of the primary reasons I brought this about is because we have an opportunity, and[1795.56] and I mean a golden opportunity, to apply for DNR trust fund grants. And of course, they are not guaranteed, but we have one heck of a good opportunity here with the matching funds that we've already accrued, that, incidentally, that fifty thousand dollars would include in matching funds, to get four hundred thousand dollars to put into this project from the state. And incidentally, that money is taken from, from, uh, gas and oil drilling in this, in the, um, in the state, and other fees that the, that the, uh, the state gets for that very purpose of preserving green space, making parks for the communities in the state of Michigan. And so what we would be doing is taking advantage of a service that the state government has actually put forth to help us. And we would also be putting to rest a very sore spot in the community for not taking action on something that we, and I say we, because I'm now sitting on this board, that we accepted and acknowledged and agreed that the community needed it, and we haven't done anything except kick the can down the road. And I just think that's shameful. And, uh, we've grown exponentially in the past two censuses. I would dare say we've increased in size by two hundred and fifty percent since, since, uh, two thousand. And yet, how many parks did we have when I graduated from high school in nineteen seventy-two? The same amount that's on that paper right now? That was fif, what, fifty-three years ago? And we've been sitting on that land ever since. I see no reason whatsoever why we can't dedicate the money that's on here and the time and the effort and the commitment to do this for the community. There's, there's no negatives to it at all. And you've all went back there, walked it, you've all seen what it, what it is, and I would hope that you can see, you can see what it, what it, uh, you're looking at your wife, I thought you, I thought you had to take medicine. But anyway, um, I just, you know how passionate I am about this, how, uh, how antagonistic sometime I am about this, but, you know, I'm certainly not getting anything out of it other than what every one of you would get out of it. Kate?
Uh, good, I just, I did find it in the non-motorized, uh, plan, but it is not in the action plan like it is the Parks and Rec Plan. In the non-motorized plan, I'll just read it because it's a small paragraph. Developing a safe, connected loop around Park Lake is a popular idea that has been around the community for decades. At every engagement opportunity, this idea was shared by multiple participants. Community members desire a scenic, dedicated space to engage, engage the natural amenities of Bath Charter Township and the lake. There's also growing interest in developing segments that would connect to the developing trail network in the tri-county area. A trail that would follow or be in the vicinity of the Remy Chandler Drain would allow the non-motorized network in Bath to be connected to facilities beyond the township, potentially spurring economic development opportunities. So that's under chapter five, non-motorized improvement options. But it's not under chapter four, which is the, the actual plan, the goals. I just wanted to put that on the record. Kate?
There's like a chapter seven in there, I think, too, which was like action plan?
Yeah.
And I didn't really see it listed in there either, which was surprising, but.
It was very generic, very, uh, very milquetoast, the, the action plan in there.
When I'm looking at the recreation, Parks and Recreation Plan, it does list goals. Goal number one, provide quality leisure time activities. And I don't know if these are ranked goals, or are they just a list goal, like, if they're prioritized? But it was, provide quality leisure time activities with special consideration given to improving health, fitness, and the environment. Goal two, provide safe, broad, community-based recreation opportunities that improve quality of life. Goal three was provide non-motorized pathways and routes for recreational and transportation use. Those are the main ones. Six was retain public land for future generations. Goal five was develop recreation opportunities that focus upon and take advantage of the Bath Charter Township water resources. I feel like this aligns with a lot of those goals. But my question is, in terms of the grant opportunity, what has to happen from the Board of Trustees specific to the Park Lake Trail to move forward on that grant? Or why couldn't that grant move forward with the action that we've taken so far? Does it require money? Is that the sticking point here?
Yes, I, I don't know that this is a sticking point, but it also requires an approved grant form like we just filled out, and they do not have that, right?
Okay.
So like in a formal way, the, this body would have to vote yes on that grant form.
So does somebody has to go through all the work of, of filling out the form before the Board of Trustees will approve it? Or we have to say it's okay if you want to start the process? Because that seems like a lot of work to then turn around and not get approved for it.
I mean, it's a two-page form, I don't know that I would describe it as a lot of work.
Oh, so it's just like a permission to apply type form?
Yeah, it's that form we just approved, like, literally, just approved. It's, you know, who is it to, how much is it for, what are the goals, how does it tie into these things? It's not no work, but I don't think it's not, I don't think it's a lot of work.
What kinds of entities can complete that form?
Township staff.
Who don't want to do the trip?
Or don't want to support this version of the proposal that's in our packet, is what I heard Ben say.
Okay. I did see.
I'm sorry, I did, I just want to clarify, I see where you're going with this. We also could, without the form, direct the staff to do the project, direct the staff to apply for a grant.
Right.
So it, it can work both ways. It's not like we can't do anything because our staff doesn't like the project. We, we could direct them. But the way that we usually find out a grant is available and what the details are is through the form, through staff. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense.
I misled you there.
On the Planning Commission, we saw a few projects that were presented through the CIP process this year in the Park Lake area. There was some infrastructure stuff at Wiswasser Park, flooding, draining. There was some bathrooms, there was a boat launch. I think those were the major ones. And it was mentioned mu- multiple times that this could be, that those projects could work together in, in a Park Lake enhancement type grant. And I would assume that the Park Lake Trail could be rolled into that since it's adjacent to all of those other things. Is that something that, that staff might have an interest in as using a grant for that multifaceted approach that includes the Park Lake Trail? Because I think those are all things that, that there is support for or interest in. Otherwise, I don't know why they'd go through the CIP process.
Just add to it.
Well, I just wanted to see what the staff, or what our staff leader, I should say.
The leader.
So the things that we've discussed, uh, in, in, after receiving that recommendation from the Planning Commission of having almost like a recreation corridor, for the lack of a better term, is, is the idea that we could also make Park Lake Road accessible and safe for people that are maneuvering down and through the different parks that we have available to them in, in addition to, um, the infrastructure issues we're having at Wiswasser Park and the boat launch. It, it would be my hope that we could focus on the north side of it and make it safe for people to travel between the beach and, um, some of the businesses that are very successfully, um, operating there down to the boat launch into Wiswasser Park.
Oh, pickleball courts was the other thing. Okay, so I.
Because we've, we've, I guess we've heard in the community more concern about the safety of Park Lake Road. So for us, if people are, um, walking through there or traveling through there on bikes, that I think the goal from our perspective would be to make that safe for them to do so.
And tacking on fifty-five hundred dollars for woodchips wouldn't, would be out of what was reasonable? I don't know.
I just want to clarify, i- if the feedback from the community had not been safety of Park Lake Road, would you and the staff support the Park Lake Trail?
Um, I would not, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on.
Thank you for clarifying that.
It's not one or the other, it could be both or neither, frankly.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you tell us, Karen, why you wouldn't support it?
Um, I, it's been, uh, the entire time I've been here, I think you, it may have started just before that, when I came here in two thousand twelve. In my opinion, it's a lot for, uh, DPW, and I know you've, you've said it would be easy. For me, it's the, the water issue. It impacts the residents that live along Webster Road. I have concerns about it turning, um, it, it, it leading out to Park Lake Road and dumping people either into a Park Lake Road where we haven't addressed the safety, or bringing them back the way they came to go back to their car. I, I just don't think it leads anywhere. It doesn't mean people can't go out and enjoy nature. But I think it either dumps them out onto Park Lake Road, or it takes them back to their car where they came. There have been fantastic ideas over the years of having like a bird watching station or somewhere people could go. I do support that. I support the waterways on Park Lake Road, or Park, Park Lake, um, itself. I just, I, I am not and have not been in support of the nature trail.
You do like nature trails, though, right?
I, I do like nature trails. I'm a big bird watcher.
I know you are.
So, yes, I, I do like nature trails. You what?
I said I like to watch big bird, too.
Okay.
When we had our, um, public meeting in the spring of last year, we had some folks write in to us, uh, supporting the trail, some not supporting the trail. While this has been advertised as a topic tonight, we also had an email from a resident advocating against the trail. Uh, I'll just read this out loud for folks. My name is Harvey Wright, I'll skip his address, uh, resident of the township for over fifty years. Opposed to putting money into a trail around the end of the lake when we have hundreds and hundreds of acres of DNR state land that we may hike and enjoy already available. If my memory is correct, that area is mostly swamp ground. What will be the ongoing cost to maintain, maintain such a venture, only to be used by a few vocal Bath residents? So that's the only piece we got new for this conversation. I will say the majority of feedback we've gotten, uh, has been pro-trail. But I do want to make it clear when folks send in information about how they feel pro or against that, we put that on the record.
Can I, I can speak again?
Yeah, take it away.
Okay, um, we just heard about, uh, the north side of Park Lake, the south side of Park Lake, and being, let's do this one and not that one, let's do that one and not that one. These are two separate, this is apples and oranges, this is, uh, plums and pumpkins. Why not do both? In fact, um, I would like to see it, and, and in fact, Karen brought it up, when Troy, uh, not Aikman, Troy Feltman was here. That was a quarterback, wasn't it? Anyway, um, that was his goal. He's the one that was instrumental in purchasing, uh, uh, through a DNR trust fund grant, ironically, for the purposes of the Park Lake Trail. The flag lot that goes out to Park Lake Road to circumnavigate the south side of the lake to get you from Park Lake Road to Webster Road. I'm not sure if you all know the demographics of this township, but how much percentage of population lives in the extreme southern portion of this township? A great deal. And, uh, again, I've been, uh, approached by the Oak Island community who owns it. There's, what, two hundred and, almost three hundred families there, and they use the trail readily right now. And I have been unable so far to set up a meeting with the, uh...
The right person at the?
Yeah, well, I was trying to think of her title. Anyway, last year, um, I tried to find out who would be the person that would be in charge of talking to us about the possibility of joining partnership with us to give us an easement, to bring the trail up through land that literally is on Oak Island, uh, the Oak Island Community Mobile Home Park. Because it would make the trail a little more easier, a little much, a little more elevated out of the, the, uh, waterway. I was, uh, greeted with some great enthusiasm by that individual. He was the Vice President of Operations for the state of Michigan. And, um, I tried to call him after the first of the year, and, uh, his job has been eliminated, and he was fired. So I found out who replaced him with those processes, and I'm in the process of, uh, and again, I spoke with her, and she said that they have a very, very proactive program to encourage non-motorized trails within their communities, and they would welcome it with open arms. So that's something, something to be thought about as well.
And Ray has kept me updated on those contacts, and you sent me the information.
Yes.
Today or yesterday.
One other contact that I didn't tell you about, that, it was kind of a carpe diem kind of thing, um, Planning Commission meeting. Sam I was there, and, uh, we just got to talking, and, uh, I asked him about that eighty-four, there's an eighty-four acre parcel just to the south of where, uh, this Park Lake Trail would go. And it runs along, uh, the west side of Oak Island community, all the way down to the pines, if you know where that's at. That's a subdivision down at the, uh, extreme southern end of the township. He's interested in maybe working with us to enhance the trail system along there to get, get to those communities. I've, so far, we haven't gotten our heads together, but he said, in, in his last voice to me, as he walked out the door, he said, we'll talk. He said, I'm interested. So, this is, you know, the, the, if we start on this Park Lake Trail, it's going to blossom for this community. There's exponential growth that could happen in and around those, uh, uh, lands, those vacant lands. The eighty-three acre parcel is, is a, uh, a dead, a dead lake, basically. It used to be called Polywood Lake, then it was Polywood Bay when I was a kid, and now it's filled in, so it's, it's nothing. You've been back there, Dan. And then there was talk about the Remy Chandler, uh, easement that goes from Webster Road all the way over to Chandler Road. And that was, I attended some tri-county, uh, non-motorized trail meetings back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and that was brought up about the possibility of reaching over there to that. And that would in essence bring a non-motorized trail to all of those apartments and students and, and residents over on Chandler Road, the extreme western portion of the township, and be able to utilize the trails that would come over here. And I guess, I, I can't emphasize enough, I mean, we're, we're trying to kibosh, uh, uh, plan for an enhancement of the community that benefits everyone. And we're really, really not spending that much money to do it. And we need to try to appease the needs and wants of our citizens, um, in our community, and the, you know, the, and would hope that we would draw some new citizens and new residents to this community. And non-motorized, uh, hiking and, uh, bird watching and the like is growing a great deal. And what I envisioned, uh, in the, in the, in the large picture is writing at least two DNR trust fund grants this year. One for the north side, Wiswasser Park, uh, maybe the bathrooms, it just, just depends, but the, the non-motorized pathway from the beach over to Wiswasser Park. Pickleball court, it was, what is it, a multi, what was that called, Ben, a multi? Yeah, to, to get that paid for, um, and, yeah, and just to put it, put that all together in a DNR trust fund grant, because we purchased the, uh, former Gupta property on both sides of the, of the, uh, Park Lake Road. That can be matching funds for a DNR trust fund grant. We purchased just recently the, uh, the house, what is the name of that house?
It was the same property.
Six-three-eight-three Park Lake Road. We just purchased that, um, for, I don't know, eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars. And the minimum is twenty-five, twenty-five percent matching funds for a DNR trust fund grant. And the more you put in, the better chance you have. And right now, for a four hundred thousand dollar grant for the purposes of that north side, we'll call it a, uh, the, the, the north corridor improvement, but it could fall under the, on the auspices of, uh, DNR trust fund grant. We have about darn close to two hundred thousand dollars, we have fifty percent matching funds for a four hundred thousand dollar grant. And it's just sitting there, waiting for us to take it. All we have to do is apply, and the same goes for the Park Lake Trail. I mean, what did our, what did our forefathers want all that land back there for? I mean, they've been acquiring it, and, and Karen, you've been around since we have been acquiring some of the, uh, foreclosures. In fact, we've purchased some other properties back there. And correct me if I'm wrong, it was for the purposes of creating a park and a trail back there. Uh, what else could it be for? Because it's, you know, now it's around eagles and stuff, but I think that's fantastic that we have eagles back there. That's even more reason to, uh... That's even more reason to, uh, encourage people to carefully walk through there and, and observe wildlife. Have I talked enough?
Yes.
I have a question.
I, I just...
My mouth's getting dry.
No, I'm teasing you. Uh, that's really helpful context. I, I do want to say, though, that the staff, from what I have heard, do not agree necessarily that the two hundred thousand dollars that we have already spent could be used as match. We're not sure that that is true. So I just want to, and I'm not arguing that, I just want to make sure people hear that there's another view of that.
Okay, Riley Millard, Riley Millard is his name.
You just made that name up.
He's, he's right here on my phone. Riley Millard, he, uh, is a Assistant Director, I just made that up, but he's something to do fairly high up at the DNR Trust Fund, at the Grant Division of the DNR. Um, he reached out to me after Williams and Works did our non-motorized plan, and said, uh, hey, they kind of think you might want to apply for a DNR Trust Fund Grant for the Park Lake Trail, and then also for improvements at Whiswasser and the beach and the like. He said, anyway, give me a call. Um, and he was open-harmed about that. And, and then, God, it was probably two years ago, Karen and I talked about matching funds and the like, and if you could use properties purchased. And so I, I approached him with that subject. Can we use properties that were purchased for matching funds? You know, the dollar amount that we paid. And he said, by all means. He said, if it has, it has to be for that specific project, and there is no time limit, really. I, because I told him, I said, we've been acquiring these, these, uh, properties since nineteen seventy-seven. And, uh, the largest twenty-acre parcel that ironically Oak Island gave us, uh, donated to us for a dollar, was the twenty-acre parcel that is now, if you look at any map, on Google Maps, whatever, it says Park, and there's a trail that goes through it. And it's the south of Park Lake, so we call it the Park Lake Trail. And I want to see it come to fruition for all of us.
Yeah, I, I know you do. I, I just want to make sure that, I think sometimes what we present to the public is like, this is all wrapped up in a bow. Why won't the staff do this? Why won't the board do that? And I think, I think that's unfair. I think we may have just a difference of opinion between the groups, and I think it's okay. I think it's okay, the staff doesn't want to do this, and if any board members don't want to do this, I think that's okay. They're not bad people. Uh, but I think we all have to get on, we've had a real struggle, in my observation, of getting on the same page of what the facts are, are of the situation.
Correct.
Right, like land, uh, who owns what, borders, you know, fifty years of, uh, scrolls that had to be unearthed from, you know, the Clinton County Courthouse, and that's, that's not a, a take on you, uh, Ray. You've worked very hard to pull this stuff together. Uh, but it's been hard for, I'll say, me as a board member who has been supportive of this since we pitched it together back to the board in two thousand thirteen, when it was going to cost two point five million dollars.
Four, no, it's two million, excuse me.
It, and it was nice. It was going to be great.
Yeah.
Uh, so I've been supportive of it, but it's been hard to, to pull together, like, what, what is real, what is not real, what is actually happening to move things forward?
Nothing, to be specific, is happening.
Right, right.
And one thing I'd like, can I make another segue here? There's been, uh, ad nauseam talk about, quote, "private citizens" on the south end of Webster Road. Um, there's very, very, very little talk about his open and willful apparent alleged violation of trespassing, uh, in posting signs as, on Park, on, on Bath Township property, posting no trespassing, no hunting signs, just over the border from his property, um, putting up a multitude of tree stands. Of course, there's no proof that they were his, but I, I know for a fact, a couple of them were. Um, and additionally, uh, I guess I don't understand why, and this is me talking, a private individual, a homeowner here in the community, why do these two individuals get special brain power from us, thoughts about violating their private space, when they knowingly and intentionally violated our community space by going onto knowingly off-bounds hunting property to hunt?
I, I can't answer that, but I will say, our job can't be tit for tat.
No, no, I understand that.
We're going to do this because we're mad at these private owners for this, right?
No, that's not it at all.
No, I know, that's not what you're saying, but I want to make it clear to people, what they've actually done in violation of the law has nothing to do, or should have nothing to do, with our determination of this project. They're, they're separate.
Well, I...
And where we have contacted the authorities for these alleged violations, the authorities have investigated and told us they're unwilling to do anything until they can see some sort of court order on where the borders are.
Exactly.
Right? So like, I want to just be really clear, like, our hands are now tied on that issue, because our policing authority is through our police, and the police have told us they are unwilling to do anything.
And guess who the police got call on?
At this point. I know, but I, I just want, again, I think this is what gets lost on Facebook and in the, you know, town prior crowd.
Oh heavens, yes.
That things have been done, but our hands really are tied. It's not that people are purposefully trying...
But they don't have to be. We're a governing board that needs, needs and should be making decisions.
But the project has never had four board members approve it and direct the superintendent, or the superintendent before that, or the superintendent before that, to do the project.
You do know why. Because it's never had a motion made to ask for...
Sure, but like, that's, I just want to be clear, that's what it takes at, so regardless of this having started decades ago, regardless of it having gone through two staff leaders, regardless of it having gone through a hundred different board members.
Three staff leaders.
At, at this point, the only thing that can move the process forward is four or more of us saying, yes, we're going to do something, here's the direction to the superintendent. So I, I think it's helpful context of the history, but it actually is disconnected from what has to happen moving forward. And folks can be upset that previous superintendents didn't move it forward, that previous boards, I think those are fair emotions. I've sat on some of those boards, that we did nothing.
You and I both?
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't want to discount that. I just want to be really clear around the emotion around this, that there is one pathway, see what I did there?
You did it well.
Forward for this, which is, this body's got to make a decision. Someone's got to make a motion, someone's got to second it, four people got to vote for it.
I, I would like to make just one little more statement about monies spent. Um, there's been, uh, and Karen could have the exact amount, of the amount of surveys that we've done, and I'll use the term again, ad nauseam, we have surveyed back in that exact spot where the Park Lake Trail is to go, four times, the exact same property. And guess what it shows? It shows that the original survey from nineteen forty-nine is correct. And I guess, the, I would like to make a motion right now, related directly to this, that would solve a great deal, is the, the libor that I brought up back in May, that states by Circuit Court Order that all of Webster Road is to be allowed to be used by the public. And if you may recall, a lot of you were here, when I made that presentation, I asked, "Do Circuit Court Orders have any teeth?" And that was pretty much me just throwing that out there in the ether, because it was never answered, it was never addressed or anything. So I would like to make a motion to request our legal counsel to speak on that, to see if, uh, I'm full of smoke, or does that Circuit Court Order have teeth, and is Webster Road open to the public? And if it is, I should say, if it isn't, then why did we spend the money for the fourth survey by E N G Engineering to go over the original nineteen forty-nine survey that clearly shows the right-of-way going through Mr. Terame's land right now? Since before even, before even the, the bridge was there, that, that survey was made. And I guess, if, if we're not serious about the trail, then why didn't, heck, did we spend twenty thousand dollars on these surveys?
Sure.
And, and then, what I'm wondering is, can we use that money as matching funds?
I mean, that's, that's smart. I, I like that. I just want to clarify, are you asking for our legal counsel to create a legal opinion, or are you asking for her to speak right now?
Well, I could do both, can't I?
I mean, I don't know that she's prepped to speak at this moment.
She doesn't have the information.
Exactly.
There's so much, I think, as we talked about in June of last year when we had this meeting, there's a lot more than just the two documents that were previously provided.
Yeah, and that was me, uh, kindly, I gave it, gave them to him. I can't remember your name, I apologize, but, um, because those had come up long ago, I mean, back in two thousand thirteen, when they first started doing the water control structure. But, uh, those need to be addressed, and I think they could, they could finish the indecision and, and trespass allegations that the two private individuals back there have.
Okay, so, to put what you've said, what I think the motion is to seek a legal opinion from our legal counsel about this survey, border...
Right-of-way.
Lines, right-of-way issue.
Right-of-way is what it is. Sixty, sixty to sixty-six feet wide going all the way around.
Okay. We have a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, my first question to our legal counsel, while I'm not asking you for a quote, could you give us a roundabout idea of how many hours, something like that, might take in the cost per hour of that?
Um, so off the cuff, right, I don't even...
Yeah, we won't hold you to this, but like a general idea.
No, I was just, I was actually, the way I was trying to back into that was, I don't even know what it's going to take to understand what else I, we need to see. So, I mean, you're looking at several hours, just to ascertain what is here versus what might be needed, because I know there are materials from June of last year. Um, I attended it, sat right there and watched the whole presentation. I know that we would need to look at that. So I would think at, at least just trying to find documents and understand the scope. We're looking at five hours. The analysis is going to be significantly more than that, because there are going to be layers of material here. So it would not be outside the realm for this to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars.
Hey, could we use that for matching funds?
Sure.
All right. Uh, questions, uh, concerns, thoughts? Uh, let's stick right this moment to the motion, uh, and then we can go back to the, the rest of the conversation, if you will. The motion is to seek a legal opinion that is loosely estimated to perhaps cost around seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, about the right-of-way. Kate?
Um, I feel like it would, it makes sense. I think it's a smart move to get an answer to this question. This has been a central question to this whole project, every time I've heard about it. And the trail is there. It's not like this has to be plowed through the woods. Like, there's a trail there. My husband and I went and walked it last spring, having never been there before, but in preparation for all of these discussions.
What did you think?
Um, well, uh, my point here is that there's a trail there. We just showed up, we just walked along, across that little bridge, past a gate, whatever. What's there stopping anybody else in the community from doing that? We walked all the way over to the parking lot at Oak Island. What's to stop anybody at Oak Island from just hopping on that trail and walking over, which may end up in some sort of trespassing dispute with these homeowners down the road that we're going to be wrapped up in any way, debating over whether these members of the public are trespassing or not trespassing. Whether it's official trail or unofficial trail, it is on Google Earth, like, you could look and see and think, there's a trail here. You'd be perfectly, um, I guess naive in not knowing better in this case. But I think it makes sense to get this question answered. One, because I am kind of tired of hearing about it, but two, because I think it may come up at some point that might be more timely and also more costly, um, if it's in the context of some other situation or event happening out in that space that, uh, it kind of looks like it's open to the public as it is, especially from the Oak Island end. You just walk right through, it's just right there.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I do want to be clear that our legal opinion from our attorneys won't actually be a decision, right?
No, but it will be a clarification of when somebody's standing in a spot, where they're standing, whose property they're standing on, and who's responsible for it, and who gets to say whether it's trespassing or not trespassing when you're in this particular zone.
Yeah, what I'm saying is ultimately it would be a court. What they would give, and tell me if I'm saying this wrong, Lizzie, at any moment here, but they would give us something that we could, I think, fall back on and say, to our best, uh, you know, understanding, this is why we made decisions, uh, but it, it is not a determination. Is that fair?
Uh, that's accurate, and I think the other thing that comes to my mind, having listened, um, on this topic a couple different times, is exactly what trustee Kaki said, which is that individuals would be the ones who are maybe approached by these homeowners who are being accused of trespassing. It's not the township that's a defendant in that action.
Correct.
Which is, I think, another layer of the complexity here. It's not as if the township's walking in and, and getting to, to be in the Perry Mason moment and saying, but look, we have a court order. Um, that, that will be between individuals and a civil process, regardless. Um, so, uh, as I suspect, there was, there's going to be quite a few different layers to the answer to this question.
And, if I may, I did speak, and I can't remember if I told you this, but I did speak with, um, Mr. Hen from Hen Lesbords, um, on an official basis with, uh, the Clinton County Road Commission. In two thousand twenty-one, we had a, a meeting during COVID, and, uh, the, um, Clinton County Road Commission Commissioner was there, uh, Mark Trotter was there, and Bill Hen was there. And this was all brought up to him. I sent him all those documents, and, uh, he said the onus here, he said, this is cut and dried, this, he said, the onus is on the private individuals that own this land to, to, uh, make their dispute that you're trespassing on their land, because it's not their land. Um, there's a right-of-way that goes on that road, and that's what the whole crux of this thing is, is he insists that he owns that land bridge. And the, his, his deed, your deed, the, the township's deeds state that the, the property line goes right down the center of the road, and in at least three different warranty deeds that the township owns, it states verbatim that you have right of ingress and egress to that property. And there's only one way in there and out of there, and that's Webster Road via that, uh, as it, as it's called, proposed park key drive. And so that's, you know, that, uh, how do I want to say, one of the things that, that would be, you know, critical to your firm looking at if you, if we chose...
Well, we, we're not saying different things, because what I'm saying to you is, it's not up to the township to walk in and have a hand up permit to members who are on the trail. Right, that's, it's not their, the township's right to, to tell people, here's what you do when they sue you, or when they call the police on you. It is between the individuals on the trail and the private property owners who contend they have rights to that space. That could be a civil action, that could be attempted criminal, um, action. I doubt the prosecutor would take it up, but that's between those individuals, which is exactly what it sounds like the road commissioner said. The burden is on those, that private property owner to defend what they view to be their property rights.
Right.
Which is exactly what they're doing when they make a claim of trespass against somebody on, on that property. So we're, we're not saying different things.
Right.
Um, the issue is, so if we are able to come back with the conclusion that the township has good and strong title and right to claim that area for a trail, the next, I think, logical question is, well, so what do you go about doing with that information? Um, certainly, there's a world in which, uh, maybe we could, uh, pursue some sort of action at the Circuit Court level, asking a, a judge to give official, updated decree that is not from, um, the early fifties in a case they don't know all the details about, because that's the other piece of this puzzle, is I don't know what brought the parties to this particular court judgment. Um, and then even if we do that, does that actually stop the claims of trespass? Because knowing you have rights versus somebody believing that you actually have rights are sometimes still two very different things. So I think that will be the next step after that, but we're, of course, happy to do whatever the board directs us to unpack this issue.
Sure, sure.
All right, I want to keep moving us forward. Al, Brenda, I haven't heard from you on this motion issued. Do you have anything to add?
He had his hand out all this time.
Someone was speaking.
I've got to get that bell.
Yeah, you need that bell.
The drain commissioner said he does not want people walking across the dam. He...
Oh, that was...
It's their responsibility. If something happens to it, they've got to fix it. He does not want the trail going across the dam. So you, you have the property there to get it. We bought Durfee's property from the county drain commissioner, or from the county messer who it was from, for the path. It runs right along the, the river, or the lake. And so that's where the trail is supposed to have, that's when we bought that property, the trail was supposed to go, was right along, and... the trail was supposed to go, was right along and on his property. It was five acres, now there's about four, about one, because the flooding covered up most of the property that we.
That was all intentional.
Yeah. Yeah. But I, I am in favor of going around the lake and putting a sidewalk in, because I see these little kids, and they don't have adults with them walking along that road. The road was supposed to have a three-foot walkway on the outside edge. The county didn't, when they did it, they didn't put it in. And so I think we need someplace for the kids. I'm not, I'm in favor of going after a grant. Don't, don't think I'm not, but I think our first priority should be for them little kids walking along that lake.
I think so. Brenda, any thoughts on the current motion?
I agree with the sidewalk around Park Lake, but I also, nobody has called Oak Island yet to find out if they're even interested in allowing us to use, and got the answers?
Yes.
And then, um.
A resounding yes, please.
But we don't have anything in writing.
Correct, and that's where we're at in the process, is, and again, I mentioned that the one guy was fired and another person has taken their place literally in December of 2024. So she's trying to get up to.
All right, go ahead and continue, Brenda.
I just think we should stay away from this side of the lake and concentrate over on Oak Island. That's my thoughts.
You mean, it would start and end over there rather than, okay. Thank you. Jen, have I heard from you?
Um, nobody here has discussed, like, we have a balanced budget. Where's these funds going to come from? Yeah, you might get a grant, you might not. So does the project die if you don't get a grant? Other thing to think about, um, I am actually not for the trail. I think it should be left as is. People use it as is. I don't think we need to put wood chips back there. If people are using it, they're using it because they know it's there. Um, I too am for sidewalks on the north side between the beach and Wiswaster Park.
Folks in the audience, we can hear you up here.
And then, um, I don't think we should honestly make any decisions on a trail until we actually have a strategic plan for this board.
Thanks, Jen. Sherry, you have not said much either. Feel free to pass, you don't have to speak, but I want to give you an opportunity.
Well, I don't see a negative in applying for the grant. If we don't get it, we don't get it. So I make a motion, we apply for the grant.
Hold, hold your horses. We've got a motion on the table. You can make that motion in a moment, but.
I'll make it in a moment. I agree with the sidewalks too, but the, I think the trail could be, if Oak Island, we've got to pursue that. Speaking with them, if they say, okay, five grand to put in some soddust and put a sign up and said, here's our, our trail, is not a big deal. And if we want to proceed along with step two or three, we can bring that up at the time. But we have to get permission that it's a long-term, okay, to use Oak Island for sure.
Without question.
And, but I don't see why we can't apply for a grant. But if we get it, we get it. We have more money to play with, and I would like to see the trail go in if we can manage it.
Thank you, Sherry. I, on this motion, I'm going to vote no. I don't want to spend, God bless you and your firm, I don't want to give you more money if we can avoid it, and I, mostly because I don't need that information to vote on the trail. I already have my opinion on the trail, it doesn't hinge on that issue, so that's why I'm going to be a no. Are there other discussions about the motion at hand? The motion is to seek a, a legal opinion on the right of way issue from our legal counsel.
That's all the motion says.
That is all the motion is at this moment?
This motion.
This motion, this time?
This time, right now.
This place.
Correct.
Of these people.
I mean, we have money budgeted for legal stuff. Would this come from that, or would it put us over what we would probably typically spend?
It's in addition to what we planned for a typical year, so I would offer, we wouldn't know until later in the year, but most likely would put us over.
I guess I have a question too. If that five thousand dollars is going to put us over, or the legal opinion is going to put us over, then where does that hundred and, almost two hundred thousand dollars in windfall interest go? Doesn't that go into the general fund?
It's already accounted for and used.
Okay.
When we did the budget.
It's already used.
When we budgeted, it's in the budget.
How can you use, oh, okay. But we just found out about it.
Well, the audit will tell us at the end of the day exactly what the numbers are. What we have budgeted for is what we planned for, right? That's what the budget is.
Okay.
If we didn't know, we would have more money, there is more revenue, but that doesn't put it into the budget. That, those are, you know what I mean? Those are different things. But to be fair, there would be more revenue available, yes.
I, yes.
It would be, interest from last year would be in our fund balance is where that would go.
I don't, I don't see it taking that many hours to do this legally, but I'm not an attorney. So.
I mean, if I asked you, Ray, how many hours you have spent studying the document you're asking her to, I bet it would be lots of hours.
Correct, and in that, I've put all those hours in, I do have certified copies of everything from the register of deeds that she could possibly ever want, I'm sure.
Well, and she would do, they would do their due diligence.
Yes, again.
And, you know.
They can't trust me.
Frankly, I'd rather approve seventy-five hundred dollars for the wood chips to start the project than the, the legal opinion.
Do you want me to revise that?
No, I'm not asking you, I'm just telling you, I'm going to be of no, and this is why. If you ask me to vote for wood chips for seventy-five hundred, I'll vote yes. If you ask me for a legal opinion, I'm going to vote no. You're asking me right now for a legal opinion, so we should probably take a roll call vote because this is money related. Thank you.
Are we ready?
We're, let's just go. We've got to keep moving.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Could you repeat that, please?
You want me to?
Mr. Cockey?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no? Mr. Fiosbus?
I'm a no.
Hey, he already said his, his vote.
I did, and I will stick by that when I'm called to do so. So the motion fails, we won't ask for a legal opinion. So that's one issue tonight. We heard a motion about applying for a grant, we heard a motion about perhaps wood chips, we heard a motion about the proposal from 2022. I'd like to get us to some sort of either consensus that we're going to move forward on something tonight, or if we need more information. I know that feels like kicking the can down the road, but it does feel like we're missing some key pieces here for folks to make a decision. Happy to, to move forward with how the board wants to move. Sherry?
I'd make a motion that we apply for the grant.
For?
For beginning stage one of the Park Lake Trail. As we.
You don't want that to include the Wiswaster Park and the sidewalks, because you're probably more apt to get it if you do that.
Okay, let's apply, put it for all of the, the projects around Park Lake. And I, I guess it would be a second motion to start with our wood chips and.
I just wanted to.
You got one motion at a time.
Okay, one at a time, okay. I got two more.
Uh, could I ask you to adjust your motion, and I'll second it?
Sure.
Uh, could, could we ask the staff to fill out the form and bring it to us, so we all know what we're voting on?
Yes, yes.
The amount, what it would be used for, the type of grant, just so we've, we all, I, I'm in support of what you're saying, but I don't want to vote yes on something that we don't have in front of us with the details.
Maybe we need to write down, write down for the staff what it is we're asking for.
I, we just, I would ask the staff to fill out the grant form.
Okay.
And, and even though they are not for this project, they will faithfully fill out the grant form the way we have asked.
Okay, yeah, I, I can amend it, that's perfect.
Great, then I will second that.
Okay.
Okay, say it one more time, please.
The motion is to ask the staff to bring back to us the grant form for the opportunities for Park Lake writ large projects from the DNR. Yeah?
Yeah, and it's possible, if I might add, that in that there's a four hundred thousand dollar cap, and we have, I think, enough matching funds to go for two grants, two separate grants of four hundred thousand dollars each.
Wow.
That's something I think we should, that should be in that motion. If it's two grants, then I would, you know.
So the max grant?
I'm going to go, it's real hard.
The, the max.
That's all, I, I want to see us, I want to see us.
So right now, it is a motion to ask for one grant form for one grant, but you think it should be for two grants?
Well, if it requires two grants, I think that the motion should.
Are you talking about the dollar amount? Like, we wouldn't be able to do all of those projects within four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I don't think you would.
So you're saying you'd break up the projects into two parts, two grants?
Well, we're talking about two totally separate projects.
I know, I'm just trying to clarify, so oftentimes when I'm asking questions, it's so Karen knows exactly what we're telling her to do later. But I just want to make sure that's what you're saying.
I think that it should be the way we cover it, yeah.
So should it exceed the maximum allowance for all of the projects to break it into two?
Correct.
All right.
Or, or.
Sherry, are you open to amending your?
That's, I am open to amending that. Do we need to include in this all the projects you mentioned that we have spent money on that could be used as matching funds? How is the grant, is that included on this form?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So we have to gather that info as part of.
But what we're going to ask is the staff to give us their best summary. We may disagree that something could be counted and then, but like, we can deal with that once we get the form from them.
Okay.
I'm still concerned, okay, about the grants, that's great. I'm still concerned about how you're going to enter into the trail. We don't have any written authorization from Oak Island. That's my concern.
It's my next motion.
Do, and you say that we own half of the road right of way to go down on Webster Road. Does that make the township with our grant money, not on the road but down farther, we need to put a fence or something up to make sure we're staying off in those property owners?
I think we should. I think that's absolutely.
Just for the purposes of demarcation, I think it's very prudent for us to put fences up, yes.
So I don't have a problem doing the grant part, but don't you think we should figure out the other part first? I mean, call Oak Island up and ask them, are they willing to do this?
Well, they're trying.
Yeah, and technically we're.
But we don't have the answer yet.
Correct.
So we're trying to do a step before we have the information.
The grant form comes back, we might have an answer to that?
We will have an answer by then.
I mean, we think we've got the, a person now.
Okay.
And do we want it from both ends? Do we want to have a smaller parking lot on each end?
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves in that sense. Um, so I hear, Sherry, you saying that you are, for allowing this friendly amendment that should it exceed the maximum allowable grant, we, the staff could break it into two.
Absolutely.
Karen?
I need to understand if perhaps sidewalks on the north side is part of this or not, because it could fundamentally break this into three grants. I mean, the, the work at Wiswaster Park and the boat launch, reconfiguring the boat launch could feasibly be one project. Sidewalks along Park Lake could feasibly be another project. And then if we were going to go for four hundred thousand for the trail and, and whatever that looks like, boardwalks, I'm not saying two point five million, I'm just saying, that could feasibly be a third grant.
Don't forget pickleball.
Pickleball.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's on the north side, I think, kayak launch.
So I don't understand if, if the north side concept is being considered here, because that by itself could be a, a great deal.
Very much so, if, if I may elucidate on that. Please?
Yes, I want to keep us moving forward as much as possible.
Definitely, definitely. One of the things that is, is going to dictate whether or not you have to go to multiple, for multiple grants, is the location of the matching funds, where they come from. That property that we purchased on the north side can only be used for projects that encompass that very area.
That parcel.
Um, in that, all of the south, south lots that we've purchased land around the south end of the lake can only be used for that.
On or nearby?
What do you mean?
Like, if we bought this piece of land, can we make a sidewalk that's not on that land that we've bought?
Well, if you, if you have the right to be there, yeah. But what I'm saying is, is that in order for, and this is what was explained to me by Riley at the DNR Grant Center, whatever they want to call it, is that the lot, the land that was purchased has to be literally used for the project.
Within the project?
Within the.
Within it, okay, okay.
And that's what, that's how you have to.
Okay.
I know that folks are looking for action tonight. I know there's folks in the crowd looking for that, I know there's members of us who are looking for that. Could I just throw out, could someone write this down in a proposal and we could look at it next meeting? I don't want to kick the can, but I hear what Karen's saying, we're asking them to put together a paperwork for something that they functionally don't support. They could do that in a lot of different ways. I don't want to put them in a situation where they come back in two weeks and say like, oh, you're playing games with us staff. Not that you all would say that, but, you know, our town crier friends on Facebook tend to say this, like, oh, Karen's ruining the whole thing. It, and I don't want to kick the can, I'm a yes on this, but could we look at something February second, third, sixth, whatever it is?
Yeah, what date that is?
That's like written down, like, here's the projects that will be included. It, are we open to that?
Is that what the grant proposal would be, though? I mean.
No, I mean, that needs to be done for the grant form, but we're not really, unless we want to tonight enumerate each of those projects to the staff, I think what Karen is saying is fair, like, how is she to know what we really want to include? Is it sidewalks, is it not sidewalks? Is it this, is it not that? I'd like to include the kayak launch, because that's something I think is great for us. But we're, you know, I have an aversion to voting on things that aren't in front of us that we can all see, read, and understand. If we move forward with this motion, I'm going to vote yes, to be clear, but I'm just throwing out, could we put this thing off for two weeks and one of you who feels strongly about this put a proposal together? If the answer's no, the answer's no, I'm fine with that. I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. Brenda?
I think we, this will also give us the opportunity to get ahold of Oak Island. I think that we're missing that key point right, right there. I think we need to do that. You said you got the contact information now.
Allison is her name. Sounds like a real clicky name.
Because if they're not going to let us enter at their end, then we have to figure out what we're going to do at this end. Do we have to put fences up? You know, what are we going to do? How much is it going to cost?
We have a motion, we have a second. I've thrown out my discussion. Are folks ready to vote? Is there more discussion? The vote would be on the motion for applying.
Is that amendment to the motion, or is that?
Yeah, can we reread the motion?
The motion as it stands right now is for us to direct staff to put together at least one grant form for DNR grants for Park Lake projects around the lake, should that exceed the maximum value of the grant to break that into two.
Well, I think that's where their discretion comes in. If they want to include sidewalks in the project, then put it in the project grant.
They don't want to do the project. So asking them to come up with the wants of this is, I think, unfair.
Okay.
In this particular instance, it's a unique instance we're in. So to ask them to make choices, I think, puts them in a dangerous position.
But to me, including the sidewalks feels like a compromise, because I know that is a priority.
But their job is not to find a compromise. Their job is.
That's our job, right?
Yes, right. But their job is not to find a compromise. Their job is, yes, right. So if we direct them to include sidewalks, we wouldn't. That's why I'm saying like outlining to the staff exactly what we want may be the fairest thing.
This is not going to be a sidewalk, just to, you know, there's sidewalks in front of the Park Lake Creamery, but it's going to be more, I would say, of a pathway.
No, it has to be sidewalks. I would propose that if we went along the north side of Park, along Park Lake Road, that there would be sidewalks.
A real sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool. I've always heard it as being a pathway.
We have to get people off that road.
Oh, I wholeheartedly agree. In fact, when, when we, when we had that re, resurfaced, I actually asked the road commission, can't you just move that center line that you paint in there, three feet over?
So when Dan Matichia was here, they did do, vehicle, they narrowed the road and left some footage on the side. It wasn't enough to be called a bike lane or a pedestrian path because that's got certain specifications around it. But they did traffic calming, to try to slow people down and to give people a place to walk safely. That is not occurring.
No, no, it's not.
So I would propose that it would be.
That'd be cool, yeah.
Sidewalk.
If you want it to be. That's the first I've heard of that, literally.
No, that, that is, that would be, that would be, well, I would, and that, and you know, sidewalk from the beach to the boat launch would be all of $400,000.
Oh, heavens.
Most likely. So that's why I'm saying is if, if we, if we are going to do this correctly, I'm asking, there, there could be three projects here.
I, I think we are in support of that.
Okay.
The CIP projects from the planning commission.
Correct.
2024.
Yes.
Sidewalks, Park Lake Trail.
Correct.
Is that the entirety in your two minds?
Sounds like it, yeah. I'm surprised that all these projects came up when I put Park Lake Trail on the, on the agenda, but yeah.
Yeah, we went from spending $5,500 to 1.2 million dollars.
Just saying. What about this? What about if we put wood chips all the way around the north side of the lake?
Okay, so we have a motion. And Sherry, I hear you're open to amending that motion a third time to say as many darn grants as it's going to take. There would be a form for each of them. The staff could pa, package the projects as outlined by trustee Hagerman as they see fit with the goal of maximizing our intent or our ability to get the grants. Karen, do you feel like you've got marching orders should that motion pass?
I do. I'm looking at staff to also get some type of feedback of.
I can get on board with that.
Okay.
Yes.
And if you need a written proposal, then if Ben's willing, I'll, I'll, I'll work with him to write one down for the next meeting.
The form, that's what we are asking for.
Oh, the form first.
One, two, three, or more forms for each grant that we would apply for.
Correct.
Does everyone feel like they know what the motion is?
So by doing this motion, is this saying that we are approving the first stage of the Park Lake Trail?
No, we're asking for a grant form. That's all we're doing. We're not even approving the grant form. We're just asking them to complete it so that we could either approve or not approve or seek more information.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Question?
No.
All right, are we ready to vote? Everyone understands what the motion is?
You already did vote.
I made no in my vote. I did not vote. All right, this does not in, indicate money, so I think we can take a voice vote on this, just to fill out a form, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. No other clarity? I just want to make sure. This has been a little complex conversation. All right, then let's move forward with the vote. We've got a motion, a second, to ask the staff to do one or more grant forms to encompass all of the projects as outlined tonight around Park Lake for the DNR trust fund grants that we may be eligible for, to apply for this year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Are there more motions to be made, or is that where we stop tonight?
Should I make a motion for the written proposal? To bring together or explain all of the projects?
No, that's what the form will do. Should we approve one or any of those forms, that then indicates that the staff should start the proposal process. Have we sufficiently covered your topic tonight? Are you ready to move on?
I'm ready to move on because it's getting late and I got cold pizza at home.
That's why you have an oven.
All right, well, thank you for that conversation. It was very, very robust. Obviously, there's more to do. And Ray and I, if I can speak for you, Ray, on this, promise to make an outreach to Oak Island together.
I promise.
Together.
Hand in hand.
We, or maybe, key in key, by the next meeting.
Yes, definitely.
Great. So that will hopefully get us some answers. That will be helpful. All right, thank you, board, for that. That brings us to, where does that bring us to? Uh, new business, strategic planning, a proposal from me. You will find this in your packet. I have spoken to most of you about this topic at some time in the recent past. And it sounds like we are all supportive of the concept of strategic planning. Thank you, gentlemen. So this is a proposal for us to get started on that. I think a fair criticism of the previous board that I sat on the last four years was that we did not strategic plan. We attempted a couple of times and we just couldn't get through some of the other issues the board was having to get us through a process and a facilitator to do that. So I'm hoping that things don't seem to have that issue. Folks in the back, we can hear you still. I hope that we have moved through some of those issues and we're able to move forward with strategic planning. This is my proposal to do that. I didn't put it as item for action. I don't think it takes action at this time. If any of you disagree or want it to be more formally acted upon, we can bring it back in two weeks. But functionally, I'm asking you to allow the superintendent to work with me to put together an RFP for strategic planning facilitators or firms, to send that out, collect candidates who are interested in facilitating, with them giving us a quote, and then the board having the opportunity to make the final determination over who we contract with and what that process looks like. I hope that the timeline, as you see laid out in the proposal, would be that we could actually start doing strategic planning activity as of July 1. It would be great if we could start earlier than that, but I do this in my day job and this always takes longer than you expect it to do with the RFP, with the contracting, with us only meeting every two weeks. So to me, that's sort of the last timeframe that we would get started in if everything took longer than we expected. So that's my proposal to you. Again, we don't need to vote on that. If we're in consensus, if there's not consensus, happy to bring it back in two weeks and we can hash it out in a different way. What are your thoughts on this proposal?
I say put the RPF out there because we put it in our budget to actually do it.
RFP.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry?
We did budget for it, yes. Is there anyone who feels like this is not the right way forward, or at least a way forward?
I think it's a good way forward. We need to do this.
Further discussion on any of it? I don't, I want to give you a chance to give feedback here, but I know everyone's talked out.
So this will be done in July?
Started in July.
Started in July.
The process of strategic planning, in, I guess the way I'd put it out is, would start no later than July 1.
And how long will it take usually?
I think that's what we ask the firms and the facilitators to, to put in their proposal. How long would it take? How much would it cost? What do they propose having, I think, doing as part of the process? I think Karen and I can come up with what we have heard from all of you and happy to share that out with you for feedback on what we would want included in that, you know, obviously engagement with the public and things like that. But they would propose, each of them would propose what that would look like to us, which would allow us then to say, we like this versus this, this is too long, this is too short, this is too expensive, this is, I doubt we'd say not expensive enough, but.
So you're, you're not making a motion then?
No.
No, I don't think it needs action unless you all feel, if we're in consensus, we have the ability without taking a vote here to ask the superintendent to, to put this together for us, and I will help you. Does that sound fair? All right, great. I look forward to starting this process. And I do think it'll help provide some clarity in conversations like we just had about where do we spend time, where do we spend energy? In the packet, you also should have found the only two strategic plans I could find in my records. I've obviously not been involved in the township forever, so I found the 2009 to 2021, and then I found the 16 to 21. We must have determined that the 20, 2009 to 2020 strategic plan was too long or didn't cover the changing nature of the township and created a new four-year plan, but that did expire in 2020.
That was originally a 10-year plan? Is that what, my, my quick math?
Yeah, mhm, that's long for a strategic plan.
I think so, yeah, too long.
And it's nice, I think, to have it go with a board term because ultimately, things change. So that's just for your reference, so you know what it's looked like in the past. All right, that brings us to, thank you for that. And if you have any thoughts, comments, concerns, feel free to call, email, text me, or the superintendent. We'll get on this right away. So 14 new business, large B items for action. First up is small A, closed session to consider the personnel evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to her request in MCL 15.2681A. The action we're looking for is to enter into closed session. I just want to give the superintendent any chance to say anything she wants to say before we consider that. But you are formally requesting. Great, which is what is required in order for us to go into closed session.
Can I ask a dumb question? Has the review already taken place, or no?
Great, you filled out the review.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, so it's done.
Okay, well, I, usually a review goes, you know, the, the person that the review is on is in the, in the session. That's why I asked, had, you know, you asked us all of our reviews.
That's what we're about to do.
Okay, that's, that's what, you answered my question.
It wasn't dumb.
The answer is no, is what, correct, thank you.
Well, the review is done. Providing it to the superintendent has not been done.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, the whole process there, I just want to make sure.
Everything's nuanced.
Sometimes, sometimes I'm a little slow.
No, you're not slow. So we're looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to that law.
I move we go into closed session.
I'll second.
MCL 150268.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion about this? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosegrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes-Bless?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will be in closed session for some amount of time, but we will return. We will take no action in closed session. All action will be taken in public session. Thank you.
Do you know what those credit cards?
That's it?
Did you get?
I did, I did. I don't have a credit.
Do we have to fill all this crap out?
I'm also.
Well, the only reason I was thinking it would be good is to go to those meetings. They pay.
You don't have to have a credit card.
You don't have to have a credit card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the superintendent?
Yeah. With as many people that we've got in here now in one little bunch, we talked about a heat exchanger, air exchanger for the offices to keep everybody safe and with COVID and flu as bad as it is right now.
RSV, all of the above.
I think we should consider that again, maybe give that to.
I'll work with Ben, I'll work with Ben on that. He did have some ideas both for the senior center and for the township offices, so that is something we can work through. My staff has been briefed and unfortunately on the quadrant of things that can happen with flu and COVID and RSV and the norovirus, so we have tried to plan ahead for some of that and what we would do if we were hit with some of that because, you know, you get three or four people that are sick and it's, you're bordering on closing the office because of it's just going to keep passing around to people. So we will work on that additionally. I thank you for the advice. I think that's something Ben, Mr. Zeeb would like to work on and will be very good at working on, so we'll, we'll move forward with something like that, but always try to make sure that we're safe and have testing available for us and we go to the doctor and we don't come in when we're sick, so we'll keep working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Ben left, so we can assign him a bunch of stuff.
Yes, let's.
For leaving before the meeting's done. Any other questions, comments for the superintendent?
Thank you for a great meeting.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
That brings us to the public statement two item, three minutes to talk about any topic to the board. Is there any public that would like to speak to the board? I see no public, so I would guess that the answer's no, but we are on record for having offered it. That leads us to board member comments. With your discretion, I would say due to the time, we would skip those unless someone is burning with something that they need to say to the community or each other.
Each, I just have one thing, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Good night.
A second from Al. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks.
How bad, two minutes over.
That was a real faux pas, Ray.
Someday Al won't be here and so somebody else got to learn how to do it.
I mean, I don't think he's going to be outside, but play.
Am I supposed to?